The regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School District on January 23rd, 2020 will now come to order. This meeting is being audio and videotaped. If anyone in the audience is taping, kindly let us know. Okay? So, all who are able, would you please stand for the fletch? Oh, okay, there's a visible one there, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Hello? Mr. Bartel?
Here.
Mr. DePazio?
Here.
Mr. Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Ms. Palusia?
Here.
Mr. Hayton?
Here.
Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Lazori?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wang?
Here.
Dr. Cafres?
Here.
We have one open seat in Washington. I do have our CBA rep, our two reps here. Awesome, so we have everybody present. Thank you very much. So, the Chair sort of ties up this as in fact the agenda. Are there any responses from the audience? Yes?
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Joe Diver, quick one on the drive, but also a member of the Dalton Select Board. And this evening, I'm bringing a message from the Dalton Select Board to this committee. It has been six months since we took the vote back in July to basically remove popular vote from future votes. And we go through a process with DESI, but the communication has been very limited since we made some recommended amendments to it. We are very, very concerned that the popular vote is removed. We will not support a regional agreement if the popular vote is removed. What we're asking tonight is for the Dalton School Committee members to lean in and put a motion on the table to re-vote on that topic. You need to be wide aware of the information about what Hinsdale had at their fingertips. They were well, they were, they knew the issues. If you look at their select board minutes, they absolutely knew what vote type was going to be taken about the new school. To remove popular vote from an option for the school district is not the right direction. So, we're very eager to have you lean in and do that on our behalf because there's been no communication for the last six weeks on the status of where this issue is. And we stand today at the six-month mark when we took that vote. So, it'd be eyes wide open. Hinsdale had the information. To threaten a lawsuit at that point in time, it's certainly not a good idea by Hinsdale. But it is what it is, and you guys were held over a barrel because of that. So, now we'll pass that. Let's lean in and remove that vote and keep the popular vote moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Divers. Just so you know, we are in constant communication with DESI trying to get an answer to some of our questions regarding this. And DESI has been delayed in its responses.
Right, and we'd like to make sure that the popular vote remains. So, I'm not sure what has been submitted to DESI. There's been no communication to the select board of what the amendment status is, and we're, again, we're very concerned. So, we're asking our Dalton School Committee members to lean in, get a motion on the table to re-vote on that topic.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Student affairs.
Hello, I'm Nick Saberi. As of Monday, on September 1st, I'm going to start into our third quarter. Grades close on 8:00 AM Monday. Last week, we had our midterms. There were two weekday, and they were one and a half hours. Making sure it is happening for students nightly or future sports. Last Friday, after midterms, a lot of team traveled to Andover, Massachusetts for an overnight competition, not even the final round, but they are doing it. Do so in a competition. On Saturday, January 18th, volunteers in the National Business Honor Society helped out and volunteer retire at the Special Victims Bowl. And also last week, the National Honor Society members worked together to make the Dolphins part of the tournament, which is a school basketball tournament. Juniors and seniors over the age of 16 are now available to sign up for and take the ASVAP, which is a test helps students learn about pre-travel things that they are qualified for. Also, today's sophomores that were in their class rank are looking to vote during the election, the B Hall Lobby. And along with the end of this week, students will receive their quarter to four cards. And next week, many students are participating in virtual, like an event, which is meant for ninth graders that are looking to try to move their school next year.
Thank you so much. Secretary affairs report. Oh, I'm sorry, any questions for Faith? Thank you, Faith. Secretary's report. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th meeting? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? That's second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh.
There's some correction.
We didn't even get to discussion. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Look on page 71, they start on page 71. And first of all, the meeting was held at Nessus's other call. This is the January 9th meeting. It was a, oh, sorry, it was a. If you look at page 71, I made some remarks in response to a review of the regional agreement. That agreement was not, in 2000, the year 2010, it was not made by DESI. It was reviewed by an ad hoc committee of the seven towns. And it never got to DESI because of, we couldn't, we couldn't reach consensus. And as I think everybody knows, we need, I think you'd need six of the seven towns to vote it. So, it's pretty easy for one or two to stop it, so it never got very far. The, about the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down, it says, "Member Peters noted that the committee is still waiting for a response from DESI if the agreement made with Dalton and Hinsdale is agreeable." I don't want to put words in Rich's mouth, but I don't, that, we never had, we have never had a formal meeting with any of the towns, but there have been discussions with individuals in the various towns, but they didn't, they weren't voted necessarily representatives of their towns. So, I would substitute to informal suggestions for amendments dealing with voting debt, because I wouldn't want to imply that any of the towns had given formal representation in any of the discussions at that point. And that's all I, but I will give word, better wording if you'd like.
Okay. Let's see that. Chaircraft Weiss. Thank you, Mr. Lacatelle. We'll make those changes. And so, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Still not.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Financial report. Yes, please.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2020-15 dated January 23rd, 2020, in the amount of $645,397.55.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve warrant number PR 2020-15B dated January 23rd, 2020, in the amount of $242,250.86.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve warrant number AP 2020-16 dated January 24th, 2020, in the amount of $796,587.54.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries.
And motion to approve warrant number APW 2020-12 dated January 24th, 2020, in the amount of $102,374.17.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. We also have donations tonight.
So, gifts and donations. Acceptance of a donation from O'Connor Studios. Be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $635.45 to the Kittredge gift account from O'Connor Studios for porters at Kittredge as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you, motion carries.
Next one is an acceptance of a donation in memory of Martin Phillips. Be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $500 in memory of Martin Phillips to the General Scholarship Fund as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries.
Next one is acceptance of a donation to the Peter Semeney Memorial Scholarship. Be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $1,000 to the Peter Semeney Memorial Scholarship Fund as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Communication from the chair. Just that we still have the Town of Washington School Committee vacancy, so please, I urge you, if you know of anybody, please let us know. Thank you. Subcommittee reports and recommendations. Curriculum, what we met tonight, and we learned about instructional rounds. Aaron Rock, Sean Therrien, and Leslie Greg Davis gave us a wonderful presentation about something new that's happening at Wakona, and hopefully it will be oriented with the principals will be trained next year, all the K through H principals. But right now, Aaron has been trained, and Sean and Leslie, they're working with, at a Harvard University program. It's now in East Boston, and they're learning a lot from their visits to East Boston. And they have someone named Stephanie, thank you, is helping them, and she is the consultant. And it's really an exciting program because teachers are working with teachers across curriculum areas to go into the classrooms to really help. The purpose of this is to really identify those students who are low performing and find out why, really have a purpose in finding out what's going on and how we can improve instruction for those children. Those of you who are at curriculum tonight, anybody want to add anything to that?
I'd just like to say that when we pointed out East Boston, they made a specific point to tell how bad that school was and how it was about to be taken over by the state and how they improved themselves over the six years of growing, so we kind of tied in to a good situation.
Right, thank you for having me. Anything else?
They also, we also discussed that this isn't something where you find the problem or you think you find a problem, and you try to fix it and you're done. It's a process that evolves over time, so you think you found your problem, you try to make adjustments, something else pops up, and you just keep going until, you just keep going to make sure that all students are being properly supported.
Right, and what they, what really targeting this year, student engagement, what does this look like? What does it mean? Is there a common language for what engagement really looks like? Sometimes we, as teachers, we're in front of the classroom, and we see everybody's taking notes, and we think, oh, this is wonderful, they're all engaged, but they're really not. They're sitting there, they learn about compliance. What were those two words, roughly, is situation?
Virtual compliance.
Virtual compliance, okay. So, it's really learning a new language and speaking that same language to everybody all together. So, the other thing that was really impressive was that they're learning to go to speak with and visit teachers who are not in their department, so that when they move to the new high school, they will be already in practice for working with people who are not in their departments, because the new building will not be a department here, department there, but rather the clusters that we talked about. So, it's really fitting in to the whole instructional process that we want moving forward. So, we're excited about that, and we asked Aaron and Sean to come back at some point to give us a little update on how things are going. We also met to approve the school calendar. I think you all have that in your packets. And Bonnie, would you read?
Sure.
Can you prove?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the 2020- the 2021 school year calendar as presented and recommended by the curriculum subcommittee. Sir.
So, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion about the calendar, Nicole?
I just have one comment I know this year, and it may have been a glitch, but that parent-teacher conferences were held prior to first term, before class coming out, and I didn't know if that was looked at and considered in this calendar, but that did.
Yes, okay. Any other?
Yes, I just wanted people to note that even though schools, school still starts the first week of September this year, just because Labor Day falls, we're not going back to starting after Labor Day.
Right. And the teachers' contracts, as we, only a week before Labor Day. Okay, so can we have, we have a motion in a second, and all those in favor of the school clause?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. We also spoke about an overnight field trip for the Wakona Business Professionals of America to Framingham, Mass. And, let me see, here it is. It's from February 29th to March 2nd, it's a Saturday to a Monday. Approximately 13 students are involved in this. They will be leaving at 8:00 o'clock in the morning on 29th, and they stay in Sheraton in Framingham, Massachusetts. And they've done this before, both of the teachers in charge are very involved with the students, and although they predicted the cost might be $400, it really is going to be $180, so much less than the original prediction. So, may I have a motion for this?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wakona Business Professionals of America to Framingham, Massachusetts, February 29th through March 2nd, 2020, as recommended by the curriculum committee. Sir.
So, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. We didn't set up a meeting for next meeting, did we?
No.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, we will, we'll set one up. Okay, that's all for curriculum. Finance.
Okay, so the finance, subcommittee met on January 14th to discuss the fiscal year 2021 initial budget, which had been discussed at the last school committee meeting, but we wanted to have a deeper discussion, go more depth. The proposed budget could be questioned by the towns that voted no on the new school, so we want to be very involved in the annual town meetings. This will be the first time that Lori and Greg have presented the budget to the towns, so at a minimum, the finance members should be available at the annual town meetings to defend and explain the budget. But I would also say that every, to all my colleagues here, and for those who have not participated in an annual town meeting, it's very important that, you know, every vote counts. Sometimes you have less people who show up, sometimes you have more people who show up, but this school budget does have to pass by five of the seven member towns, and so it's very important that, you know, as part of the school committee, we support the budget. So, if that's possible. And we should be very careful about saying anything publicly that is not correct information. The budget includes contingencies for the unknown. On January 27th of 2020, the Berkshire Health Group sets the rate for the health insurance, for the health insurance, and Greg Borlow indicated that he doesn't expect it to be more than 1% of an increase, so we'll know more after that date. The town assessments in the initial budget indicate a 3.31 increase, and comments were made that this would potentially be a tough sell to the towns, so we'd like to work to try to lower those assessments. One of the line items is $250,000 in student services for special education students that attend school out of district but may reside in the district or have parents who reside in the district, and the administration has no control over these costs. In addition, the cost per student for those students has increased to $20,000 per student, so again, it's something that the administration has no control over. We also talked about the budget book, and this is a document that's handed out at the annual town meetings sent to the towns, and it's really a synopsis of the budget. And we discussed that it should include the number of school choice students for each town, and should also show the OPEB balance as of a specific date, and also that the full-time equivalents should be explained as well. Governor Baker's budget is, was due out on January 22nd, so that will impact our budget under the Chapter 70 money. The finance subcommittee also asked Ray to verify that the school building expenses are approved by SCANSCA, which he was going to verify for us. And the decision, DESI's decision on the voting method may impact annual town meetings as well. The Dalton and Hinsdale select boards have invited the administration to their meetings. Dalton is January 27th. Hinsdale is February 27th. Our next meeting for the finance subcommittee will be February 4th at 5:30 at the central office, and we'll be discussing the tentative budget. That's all I have, unless anyone from the subcommittee has anything else to say.
Just a quick note on that for the January 27th Dalton meeting, if you want to do that, we need to know pretty soon so we can put it on the agenda, so not violate an opening law, so.
Yes, we do. Yes, we are, yes. I guess in any way, but yes, we are, yes. Mark Stow is a yes. A work for you.
Okay.
That's it, Bonnie, thank you.
Yes, that's it.
Your next meeting scheduled?
Yes, the next meeting is on the 4th of February at 5:30 at the central office. We'll be discussing the tentative budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, policy.
Well, we haven't met, we're tentatively, we were planning to meet Tom before, so we may have to change that or go after this.
Thank you. And personnel.
I have no report.
And safety and wellness, we, well, we talked about it a little bit, and we talked about, and we had a meeting of all the chairs of the subcommittees, and we talked about how, since its inception, other things have come into play that sort of overlapped. So, our equity and diversity committee is really taking charge of some of the issues that were initially presented to us, and curriculum also, and policy, so we're at this point considering asking the policy to amend, policy that would eliminate safety and wellness committee. But we're still working out details, I think, okay? So, we'll let you know. Wakona Building Project?
Well, it's been, it's had, not a lot's happened in the last two weeks since the other. We had our bi-weekly meeting yesterday. I just, I guess the only thing I would bring up is, just to mention, I'm not sure if we mentioned last meeting or not, but there is a color committee that's been selected, and it doesn't include engineers like me, includes art teachers and things like that, so to pick the colors. They're, they're not going to be active for quite a while yet. There's also going to be an FF in the furniture committee that'll have to be convened in the near future, but again, that's, the activity of that is a weight off. There was some public, I want to say concern about the elevator at Taconic, so I just wanted to say, you know, on the meeting here, that that was addressed with the building committee and the architect as well, to make sure that what transpired at Taconic wasn't transpired here. Seems there was a little bit of misinformation, but regardless, I'm pretty aware of the situation, and there's, there's a different, the folks that put the elevator in there, or built the elevator at Taconic isn't even in the bidding process, so if there's concern about that particular vendor, that they weren't in the bidding process, so just wanted to make sure that was addressed publicly. And Sid?
May I just add that the issue about the elevator, I received an email that explained that malfunction of the elevator was actually determined to be that too many people were on the elevator trying to resuscitate the teacher who was stricken, which caused, as a built-in safety feature to the elevator, the elevator stopped because it was overloaded. So, it wasn't, you know, a fault of the elevator, it was designed to be that, and we applaud the committee that tried to help the teacher, but apparently too many people were on the elevator, so, thank you. Okay. And some of these, do you know, January 30th? Yes.
Okay, January 30th.
Yeah, the next meeting, for the building committee.
Where is it?
It's at Wakona.
January 30th at 4:30. Six is six. This is six.
I'm totally wipped today.
Okay, supernat's report, your recommendation?
Sure, so as you heard, we are, we are confirmed, hopefully not, for the Dalton Select Board on Monday night at 7:00. For anyone who would like to join me, I will be there Monday at 7:00. Hinsdale, we have also been asked to attend their select board meeting, that's on February 26th at 7:00, so I'll be there on February 26th. We also have a seven-town meeting on the 25th of February, just to put that on your, on your calendars as well. And I will certainly let you know if I do hear from any other towns, they all didn't receive the same letter, but it was Hinsdale and Dalton who responded with invites to date, so please do join me if you can. Okay, that's your.
I did hear from, Hinsdale is very happy to write this letter in the conference.
Oh, good.
Good week in February, a seven-town meeting in Hinsdale and a school committee meeting.
So, that is on the books. I did want to highlight, so the equity and diversity, that continues to be a focus for us. I feel like that there are some highs and lows with that consistently, as we really try to move forward with this work and build in systems and structures to build a real clear message to all members of our community that we have no tolerance for, no place for hate in our community, certainly no tolerance for, and certainly no place for any type of racial disparity, racial mistreatment, those kinds of things, because we do continue to have issues, I think, as all school systems and places of employment and everyone are, but we're just persevering with the work, and I think that's what's most important, we're not putting in. We're not putting it on the shelf. It's not something we did last year in response to an incident. It's just what we do now. So we have confirmed for Dr. Tatum, which is extremely exciting, to keynote our opening day next year. I'll be talking about that more and more as that comes closer. Because that's a partnership of multicultural bridge. We would not be able to bring Dr. Tatum to the community on our own. But multicultural bridge came to the table and said, we'd really like to partner with you to do this, to, to contribute towards the cost. But also to have the Race Task Force be here on that day as well as our Equity and Diversity Scaring Committee. School community members obviously will be invited and our entire staff. So we are going to really try and get as many people as possible to read the book, at a minimum, to read the preface of the book that really describes how little change has actually happened in the past 20 years around issues of race. So that is something we are really looking forward to and we want to do well since we are thrilled to have the opportunity to have her here. She's actually from Braithwater. I think she was, I believe was born in Braithwater, but was raised in Braithwater, which is a small town in eastern Mass. So she was interested in coming here to Berkshire County, knowing some of the complexities we have. So I wanted to keep that on your agenda August 31st. Feels a decent amount of time away. But if you, uh, you might put off and you can be here, I think it'll certainly be worthwhile. I want to say Math Nights. There is actually still one more. They've been very successful. Liz Jackson is a math interventionist now between Kittredge and Beckett. We also have a math interventionist, Stephanie Haymeyer at Craneville. Done with our instructional coach, our principals, our assistant superintendent, Leslie, have organized really family Math Nights to really celebrate our new math curriculum and help parents to understand how to support their students at home and to see the math that's happening in the classrooms. They've been very well attended. So I think that's always something to kind of know what is getting families out because families are busy. And we've had things that have had great attendance and these have been very well attended. So clearly, people are really interested in the curriculum and the work that students are doing in the classroom. So we're going to continue to do those with a literacy night as well. We're also trying to balance, you know, there's so much focus on standards and on, um, curriculum and on, you know, statewide assessment. But both Kittredge and Wacona have done these kind of academic field day, per se, where there's really an opportunity for kids and staff to build relationships in areas of interest. And they've been extremely successful. So Kittredge's was extremely successful. And Wacona is, got a lot of excitement already around the model they're going to do. So actually, probably make no sense if they tell us about it when it happens. I think it's in April. So I don't know how much students know about it yet, but this is kind of letting you know about the, the model that Mr. Roth is using. Similar model that Kathy Buckley used at Kittredge. The only other things I do want to, actually, we probably will get to it at the end, but I don't want to forget. I do just want to know, we do have two retirements that are, that are in this package that are people who've gone with us for quite some time. I currently Leo Craneville, well over 30 years. And Mad Baker, who is a math teacher at the middle school, well known to many people. So we will certainly miss, miss them. But I did want to make note of those retirements given the length of service. That's really all I have. The governor's budget did come out. You can look at the cherry sheet online. Our numbers right now do show a small increase. A lot of that is primarily due to the fact that, um, that our school choice money coming in was significantly higher in the assessment right now than it was originally. So that, that really kind of evened out some tips in regional transportation. And overall, left us in the positive. But we know those are our public numbers and will continue to be, to be worked with. We're still waiting on information about the Student Opportunity Act. We have been told that there will be a short form. Short form means you're not getting that much money. Long, long form, as Leslie and her counterpart in Pittsfield, in Pittsfield, we're learning what to say. Long form means you are getting a lot of money. Leslie's friend will be getting a long form. In Pittsfield, we're going to be getting a short form. So we, which I add, it's something we didn't expect, you know, that the Student Opportunity Act, a lot of it is really, really driven towards some of the most associated, um, the challenged districts in the state. But we don't know what that means yet. And we do know that we're going to have to bring this forward and have some opportunity for public participation. A lot of people are talking about their public hearings for their budget. But I would be giving you more information about that as it comes out. Because we do know that there'll be a template, there'll be forms. We have to have some targets, some metrics to measure ourselves against and process. It'll be a quick process because it's due to the state April 1st. So school community will go about it in March. We will have to have some public opportunity participation in February. But we really honestly, the big, the big question in the room is, well, how much money are we getting?